What was the horn about? Have you talked to, uh, uh, Pastor Hayes? No response. Alright, well, I'll, I'll talk to the crowd.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, March the twenty first. Please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Pastor Dr. W. A. James, Grace and Truth Christian Fellowship Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Eternal God, our Father, Father of mercies, we thank you for this beautiful and terrific day today. We pray now that you will be our guide, our peace, and our strength. God, our Father, man, our brother, Christ, our Redeemer, in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our Tuesday, May, or March twenty first meeting, twenty twenty-three. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, including a cellphone, uh, at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than two o'clock PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the, to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains, but summarizing, the second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Now, the City Clerk.
Approval of ministers of March fourteenth.
May properly move in second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications for the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody here this morning. We, we appreciate you being here. I have two announcements, and then we have a couple of presentations that we would like to make. Uh, the first thing has to do with, uh, women's health screenings. Our Parks and Rec Department has been celebrating Women's History Month by prioritizing physical and mental health for women. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, is the last of the, of a series of women's health screenings, and it will be held at Hillsdale Community Center from ten AM to two PM. In addition to the health screenings, there'll be a blood drive, and there'll also be other health resources present. That's at Hillsdale Community Center from ten, uh, to two. Uh, this, these events would not be possible without the collaboration and partnership of Infirmary Health, the Mobile County Health Department, the Red Cross, and the University of South Alabama, as well as a few others. Secondly, uh, our Parks and Rec Department is continuing with our free movies. Um, we call it Movies in the Park. It's this Thursday at Matthews Park. The public is invited to come out and enjoy a screen of Top Gun Maverick. Has anybody here seen Top Gun Maverick? For those that are nodding your head, you, we highly recommend that you go see it if you haven't seen it. It's a, it's an awesome movie. Um, this spring Movies in the Park series happens every Thursday night for eight weeks at a different park each week, and all the events start at six o'clock PM. So at this time, I'd like to call on Chief Prun, who has, uh, presentation for the Officer of the Month.
Morning, Mayor, staff, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to come up today. Today, I present to you Mr. Officer William Elliott of the Third Precinct, North Side. Uh, I think it's notable to kind of give you a background of what he did for the month of February, is he responded to over a hundred and sixty calls for service in a twenty-eight day period. Um, he made over thirty-three arrests, including getting a call where he responded downtown to juveniles pulling on door handles subsequently, uh, detained the, the kids. They were arrested for multiple B and Es, and where he also seized two firearms on these juveniles. Um, I think it's also important to note that this was in the middle of Mardi Gras, where he virtually worked every single day for nearly three weeks of that four-week period. This is an officer that, that I tell you today stands before you that is motivated to provide the ultimate service to the people of Mobile, in particular on the North Side Third Precinct. He is also a recipient, recipient of, um, the Officer of the Month for May of twenty twenty-two. So this is his second time around, and, uh, I think it's a testament to his service and certainly his dedication. He's also a twenty nineteen alumnus of University of South Alabama, where he was a defensive tight end. Uh, so you can imagine being out there on the North Side. I don't know if anybody wants to try him, but he could probably tackle somebody really good. But nonetheless, I think it was suffice to say this officer, um, is the epitome of the standards of excellence at the Mobile Police Department as it regards attitude, appearance, confidence, and service. And with that said, uh, we want to congratulate him on a job well done.
Congratulations.
This time, I'll ask Chief Franks to come forward and do the, um, Officer of the Month for Firefighter of the Month, uh, Mobile Fire Rescue, and then he'll follow up with another special presentation of a group of firemen following that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and his staff and the council for giving us the opportunity to recognize one of our members. Uh, the Mobile Fire Rescue Department proudly recognizes firefighter Brandon Ripple uh, as the February twenty twenty-three firefighter of the month. Uh, he began his, uh, career in two thousand eighteen. Uh, as an informal leader, um, the fire station and emergency service, Ripple has given unparalleled attention to the most, uh, minute details for mentoring new recruits and probationary firefighters to providing emergency medical aid. Uh, Ripple's empathy, compassion, and willingness to help anyone, anywhere, anytime. He's an informal leader, um, at our fire station. Um, he's, he's, since he's been on the last few years, he's taken hazardous material technician, and probably the biggest thing is he's a vital member of our technical rescue team. Probably in the last three years, he's taken over a couple hundred hours of classes. So, uh, um, he's really helped, um, truck those class, uh, those, pass that information along to other students. So he's in an instructor role now. Um, so he is an example of exactly what we're looking for as a firefighter. Does a, outstanding job. Um, words and awards cannot adequately represent the appreciation the City of Mobile or the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, um, have for, uh, firefighter Rip. Uh, we want to congratulate him on being firefighter of the month.
Congratulations.
Um, we also would like to bring down Stephen, uh, Milhouse. He has another presentation for some members of the fire department.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Esteemed council members, thank you for having us today. On, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, a night meant for reflection on one year coming to an end, an excited hope as we prepared to launch into a new year, gunfire rang out in downtown Mobile, interrupting New Year's celebrations, New Year's Eve celebrations for thousands. Uh, Mobile Fire Rescue Department's special events teams were notified there was an, an active shooter on Dolphin Street just feet away from where several crews were positioned. Reports received were that several people were shot, making the scene a mass casualty incident unlike anything the City of Mobile had ever seen before, while hundreds of frightened civilians scattered, fleeing for safety, responders with Mobile Fire Rescue Department, Mobile Police Department, and an off-duty paramedic with Newman's Ambulance Service rushed into the scene. Paramedics, firefighters, and officers located ten victims suffering from gunshot wounds and several others with, with injuries from being trampled, all suffering from varying degrees of injury. Patients were immediately accessed, triaged, assessed, treated where necessary, and transported to emergency departments at area hospitals without delay. This was a high-stress incident. Although the evening was still tragic for many, an even larger catastrophe was prevented as a result of the quick action, knowledge, and heroism of all responders. In the essence of time, you see there are several of them here.
Oh, please stand.
Several of them are here, not all. Uh, this is just a fraction of the responders that were there that evening. But, uh, in the essence of time, we'll refrain, of course, from naming each of them individually. However, the Mobile Fire Rescue Department proudly awards each of them with the Meritorious Service Award for Outstanding Operations at an Emergency Scene.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Steve, and thank you firefighters, um, paramedics. Um, you know, it's really gratifying to know that, um, that y'all are there for all the citizens and the way you respond, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, not just from the administration and the mayor, but from the city council and from all Mobileans. We appreciate what you do. And that would conclude my remarks, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the clerk.
Adoption of the agenda. Second.
May properly move in second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise, ordinance, March twenty-fifth, Washington Square, April the eighth, James Seals Park, April the ninth, Cathedral Square, September the third, Mardi Gras Park, and April the eighth, in, um, Public Safety Memorial Park. So moved.
Second. May proper move in second and then discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Lee Anthony Clark to operate a shuttle service.
This opened a public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular one? You may come down to the podium and state your name and your address at this time.
I didn't, I couldn't hear you back there. I didn't hear nothing you said.
Yes, sir. Uh, you, you here to talk about the, uh, shuttle service?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, just give us your name and your address.
Okay, Lee Clark, seventy-six eighty-four Broome Court, Edo, Alabama, three six six five eight four.
Yes.
Uh, this is, um, a Lee car, luxury car service. Trying to open a shuttle service for the airport this time. Okay, um, I'm a native of Mobile, born and raised, um, from the Mayfield community. Um, I've been starting this car service about the last year and a half. Finally got it to where I needed to be. So trying to get, um, blessings from the council and Mobile to go ahead and start my service.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments from the council? Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular issue? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structures at twenty-six sixty-three Glass Avenue, twelve fifty-four Eslava Lane, five fifty-nine North Carolina Street, seventy thirty-three Smith Alley, seventy-one twenty-three Smith Street, and four oh-two North Cody Road, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This opened the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council of these items? Would you come down to the podium and state your name and your address at this time?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Patient Dennis. My name is Patient Dennis, and I'm here on behalf of twenty-six, twenty-six sixty-three Glass Avenue. My mother passed away last year. In the midst of my mother passing away, I was in the hospital, and I didn't get a chance to take care of because she did not leave with, uh, the deed was not in our name. And I talked to someone from the city, 'cause we've been trying to work on that house. And I was told that we couldn't do anything until we get the deed, and we just haven't had time to get the deed, because I got the notice from the city in January. And we've, and I have talked to some construction on the house. So I'm here on behalf of that, on for that property on twenty-six sixty-three. Thank you for listening to me.
So, are you all currently working on trying to get a permit to go ahead and do the renovations? Or y'all planning on knocking it down or?
We want to do the renovation on it, but when I talked to someone from the city, they told me we couldn't do anything until we got the type, got the deeds and have a name. But they didn't, our name wasn't on the deed, and that's what we found the work on.
So what's your timeframe that you think you all can?
Well, we, we, well, I'm just trying to find out, 'cause they all know anything about it. And I have talked to construction, so we can try to start working on it. And so, so, so I don't know about the timeframe, but I do know we want to renovate the house.
Yeah.
Mr. Penn, is you want? Yes, um, ninety days? Sixty? Will you, sixty days to work on the deed and get that information?
Said ninety days?
Sixty days.
Can I have ninety days?
We right now, right?
I'm just be under, because the house, the house is, the, the house is, you know, the roof on the house and uplifted, and like the grass and all that being cut on the house.
Okay. But we finna see what is that? Uh, we got David Dockabout coming down, see the, the conditions.
Okay.
Alright, David.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just one second, ma'am.
This is Dolphinbuck?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, uh, I'm gonna give sixty days, work on deeds, and then we'll, we'll come back.
And also, ma'am, if you can just talk to him to get more details after the, after this meeting, and, uh, he'll tell you exactly what you need to do to make sure that you stay in compliance within the sixty days.
Um, this is President.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Carroll.
Uh, Councilman Penn, uh, a question that may need to be asked is, is there's no clear title. There was also no deed. Uh, it sounds like there's gonna take some probate action there. Uh, we don't know the length of time that the probate action's gonna take. If it takes longer than sixty days, then she may be in danger again of, uh, unintended consequences by the city. Uh, David, it may, um, uh, Mr. Dockabout may be prudent, uh, that you and, uh, the District One Councilman kind of think through the amount of time that you're allotting here, especially knowing that we have a probate issue here on top of everything else that's going on.
So, Mr. Dolphinbuck, if, if that happens before sixty days, can we get together and? Okay. Okay, but that, that still give us an opportunity if something was, okay, alright. So just in case, then we'll, we'll look at that information and, before that, that sixty-day time uh, is, is fired. Alright.
Thank you.
And then talk to, um, Mr. Dolphinbuck, and, and he'll give you some more information before you leave. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Noni Parker, twelve fifty-four Eslava Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
So I went, um, to the court, I think it was a couple months ago. I had my documentation that it was a buyer taking over, and I, unfortunately, I did not bring that documentation with me today. And he is still buying that property. However, he asked me to, on his behalf, to ask the city council for extension so that we can get all the proper paperwork changed over into his name.
What I do is I ask the council, we can just do this for sixty days and before y'all can go ahead and get your transaction settled and everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is anyone present, else present, that would like to address the council on these particular public hearings? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Natell Foster.
Good morning, council, mayor. My name is Natell Foster. I am owner and administrator of A and O Healthcare Institute, formerly known as A and O Healthcare Center. Um, my petition today.
Address.
Okay, I'm sorry, address. This is eleven forty-one Montlemur Drive, Suite two thousand and twelve here in Mobile. Um, my petition today is to basically make known to the city council of awareness of a nursing education program that is here in the City of Mobile. Um, I founded the institution back in two thousand and seventeen. I'm the first owner, licensed political nurse to have a private institution here in the state of Alabama. My school is approved by the Alabama Community College System of private post-secondary institutions. Um, the unfortunate part about it is that I get tremendous number of students here from my institution, but, um, for example, for Monday, March twenty-seventh, I have thirty-three students that's coming in the healthcare field, but unfortunately, eighty-five percent of those students are from Mississippi. They're not here from Mobile. And the reason why they're not from Mobile is because a lot of people don't know about the programs that I have out there for those students that are under, in undersold communities. Um, maybe they're just trying to get a second chance, which I was one of those students that got the second chance, which caused me to become a nurse for over thirty years. So I just want to petition for any type of business, funding, expansions, or anything that the city council can kind of guide me on to further, um, just expand the institution here in Mobile.
Yeah, Ms. Foster, I would like to say, uh, congratulations to you and your achievement. Uh, do you have a PDF file that we can share, like in our newsletters, that we can send out to our constituents? Uh, because, uh, within seven council members that's up, you know, that's on the council, we can spread this, you know, this news out and try to, you know, help you bring awareness to the business that's, you know, for citizens here in Mobile.
Okay, I didn't bring a PDF file with me, but I do have a brochure as well as business card.
Yeah, if you can, uh, give your information to our city clerk, and she'll make sure that, uh, she can give you the email and everything that you can email her.
Okay.
Any questions of, from the council? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Belina Green.
Come run down, Ms. Green.
Good morning. Six oh-three Delaware Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero three. Good morning, mayor, mayor's office, council, women in leadership.
Give us your full name.
Belina Green.
Thank you.
Now, those of you, y'all know me, I always come down here talking and pleading by the porch. So it's something on my heart today, ma'am, that I gotta talk to you about.
Ms. Ms. Green, I hate to stop for a minute. You got to address everything.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, one of my concerns is I've been seeing homeless college students, and that bothers me. I had a little girl that was at South in the engineering program that I need some help with, and I petition your hearts today. I speak to your hearts today, and I pray I find favor with you. One of the things that concerned me was she had a choice to give up school and go into, or stay, try to stay in school and go into homelessness due to abuse. I've had two. One from a middle-class family, education major. Same thing with her. She was sleeping in a driveway. Many, uh, many times she would come to my house and stay when I was out there at Mirgo. So I pray, I pray today that we also view that issue with the homeless, because they were full-time homeless, full-time students. I had another political science major battling, battling to stay in that law field. And each and every one of them, I say, if you want it better enough, you got to stay in. I told them that I was gonna come down and speak. I asked God, am I supposed to do this? And he told me, yes, I've got to go. He also told me to remind you that the Israelites were homeless too, for forty years. Remember, they were homeless in the desert. So I ask you, let's do a correction to help some folk fish, because if we teach them to fish, they become powerful, and they are our future leaders of the city. Where we're not giving them a handout, we're showing them how to be able to take care of themselves and not use a social program. So I pray your faith in the Lord today, and I pray that Jesus Christ has touched your hearts today. I pray your strength in the Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thomas Mitchell. Ryan McMillan.
Ryan McMillan, one oh-nine South Mulberry Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six zero four. Alright, if Thomas Mitchell is not here right now, y'all have a problem. And it's a big one. So what is this, Abuse of Power and Collaboration? Alright, we're starting that. There's a saying that goes, the right hand needs to talk to the left hand. There's a saying that goes, the right hand needs to talk to the left hand. Um, like, all the, all the different government entities, they just don't talk to each other, and stuff doesn't get done as good. But, let's see, also with, um, uh, with the shooting at the paparazzi club and the, um, and, and the other, and the, um, one at Walmart and the other at, um, like, um, let's see, um, a couple others, uh, Darius Browser, what, and, um, one other young man about the same age, were, um, put there as, as a poster child, basically, so that they would take the fall for it, and, uh, they drove the, and then they took the, the first, the person in charge, in charge of the casino in Mississippi didn't even issue a warrant out for him, uh, until after he had already been, um, was, uh, put into mobile prison. So, he's there with the Niasol, uh, because of that. And half the, more than half the city, any, any brand of people I talked to, they didn't even know what they're voting on. And that just gives more power to the legislative branch through the judiciary branch. And that's abuse of power as well. And, like, all of the evidence against him is completely circumstantial, and it's all based upon the TV cop, the one who's been on television for cops and forty-eight hours and hearsay. Is that my one minute or two? Two? Oh, okay. Just because I can speak doesn't mean that I understand the world the way that neurotypicals do, or my little brother would say, muggles. Um, so, since two thousand and fifteen, uh, I've been arrested for public intoxication while sober, um, then, um, again, and last year, and then again this year, and not enough people know about the yellow card that comes from the, uh, Mobile County Health Department. And that really needs to, um, be sent and spread around, because that's gonna get a lot more people in trouble, and I don't like being people in trouble. Start discussing your system, hello.
Pastor James.
Pastor W. A. James, one four zero eight, Dr. M.L.K., Junior Avenue. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity again to address this body. I am here to speak about the proposed annexation maps that have been released and the impact of a referendum would have on our community and city. The last time I spoke here, I brought forward concerns from residents across the city regarding these maps diluting the power of the city's black American community to have proper representation in city government. This is important, because for so long, too many of our neighborhoods and city facilities in them have been left in despair while concerns and needs have been ignored. Meanwhile, we have seen resources poured out into other parts of the city. While some of our neighborhoods are dealing with constantly broken streetlights, we see the fancy ones installed in select neighborhoods. While students have been forced to walk to school in the street in areas where there are no sidewalks, major thoroughfares have been shut down for months to be a sidewalks in communities where children are mostly driven to school by their parents. And this doesn't just affect the infrastructure of our neighborhoods. After decades of being ignored by city government, too many in our community feel disenfranchised. This city will not truly thrive until these neighborhoods are brought up to par, and these residents feel as much as part of this city as you all do. We have been told you understand this, you are committed to ensuring the black American vote will not be diluted, but there, there continues to be no explanation backing up that commitment. The only thing so far we have been told is the Voting Rights Act will protect us, but we all know that the only means that it would take to lawsuit is to enforce it. As a longtime board member of the NAACP, I am very aware that the League of Defense Fund currently has a case already out of Alabama before the U.S. Supreme Court right now taking on this very issue. This is exactly why it's important that we understand how you can make such a commitment when your vote only approves a referendum and cannot guarantee the outcome. As a farmer and gardener, I learned that whatever you plant in your backyard is not gonna come up in anybody else's yard, it's gonna come up in your yard. So, therefore, I say to you today, for the good of our community and the process, please share this information. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Sherry Graham.
Sherry Graham, five one three Magnolia Road, three six six zero six. The city of Mobile has a mental health crisis. Consumers are not receiving the quality care from our current mental health providers. Everyone here has a friend or coworker who has a mental health problem. Yet, is your voice projecting trust, responsibility, accountability, transparency, and hope in your community with your consumers and your constituents? Are you going to settle for a standard of mental health services that isn't working? If so, then you are settling for complacency. The multiplicity of challenges of job, health, financial, food, housing, church, transportation, and other issues impact the mental health of each person in our community, their friends, their family, and the local economy. People will not be able to bounce back without proper mental health treatment and access to service. Are you going to sit and wait to see what happens, because it's already happening? Or are you going to be proactive and change your mindset, making mental health a first priority? Are you the visionary leader who will make a time commitment to prepare together, putting mental health as a priority? Are you going to be the leader who encourages investment of new mental health services in your community? All of us here today are where we are, because all streets lead to no competition. When there is no competition, business and nonprofits become complacent, and service and quality of care diminish. Are you going to be the example and take care of yourself? Are you creating a more positive environment, a more positive, healthy mental health environment? Speaking in a stigmatizing way leads to misunderstanding and prejudice against people who are struggling with mental health. When the future of our mental health community is improved, each member here today, part of our elected and appointed officials, will be recognized for you using your voice and actively advocating for a higher standard of mental health care in your community. Thank you for your time. Have a happy and terrific Tuesday, and always remember to breathe, smile, and laugh. Thank you.
Rodney Tumer.
Rodney Tumer, twelve oh two Navaco Road. I'm here today to speak about the annexation proposal. Uh, I've been blessed to live in several districts, District Seven, District Five, and now I'm at District Three. Many residents of District Three, where I live across the city, are concerned about the proposal and how they could impact us and the city as a whole. We keep hearing that there would be additional money coming in the city which will help us, but it just doesn't seem to add up. For years, we have been told that most of the revenue we get through annexation comes from taking in businesses so we can get the sales tax, but we already took in the vast majority of the businesses in the area during the last annexation. In addition, the county residents asking to come in have said that they get a five-year moratorium on paying property tax in the city. Uh, that's a question I'm asking, is that true? Because I don't go by hearsay. I want to hear it from the, the, the actual, uh, for the, the district, the city council. Uh, this causes a great deal of concern, because we all see that there are already so many needs in the city we already have. And while most people focus on all the needs in the district, certain ones, two or three, it's just not there. We have issues in District Seven where I told you I originally was staying, I have family out there that are elders that can't come and speak for themselves, including unmet promises that were made to these residents in Mobile Terrace when they were annexed years and years ago before you came. It also causes a great deal of concern, because we also don't seem to be able to properly serve the city we have, whether we are talking about street sweepers coming in through the neighborhoods or addressing the growing crime problems. How will they be able to properly serve our neighborhoods and all these new neighborhoods when we already don't have enough police on hand? And when will we really start addressing the root causes of crime issues? Because we all know we are, can't stop crime by throwing money at it. There just seems to be a lot that doesn't quite make sense, so I wanted to bring these concerns to you and, and also ask when the community meetings and annexations or town hall meetings will be coming to our community, so we can get a better understanding of exactly what the annexation entails in detail. Uh, they're going to be very important in exploring the reason, and we need annexation to the people of the city, and we really need to know why. So, I appreciate that time. You have a great day.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for coming down, uh, Mr. Tumi. Uh, I had gave my word a couple of months ago that, uh, once the study get back, uh, that we gonna, that I was gonna call a meeting, uh, within, uh, District Three. I believe some other council members also stated the same thing. The administration also committed to, uh, having meetings throughout the city. Uh, the thing about it is between the times that the maps that they have released to today, uh, numbers have changed. And so, hopefully, by the end of this week, I believe that the final report's supposed to be in, and so, once those, uh, that final report is in and everything is verified, I can speak for myself that I know I will schedule a, uh, meeting sometime soon, but I don't know exactly when till we exactly get those, uh, numbers.
I appreciate your transparency. Thank you, sir.
Timothy Hollis.
Timothy Hollis, nineteen twenty-four Seal Street. Just to be direct and clear, speaking about abuse of power, council rules, police body cameras, annexation, won't take long with the abuse of power. Let's just not be biased in who we grant the opportunity to have extra minutes to get the point across and who we rush away from the podium. Let's not misquote speakers to support our arguments and refer to speakers as being farce, as if they are buffoons. Body cameras. We already know about body cameras and the footage and about it being available to the citizens. But the elephant in the room, annexation. My dear friends, we are gathered here today to discuss a matter of great importance to all of us, the issue of annexation. As we all know, annexation can have a far-reaching effects on a city, especially on the underserved communities that often have to share their resources with the newly annexed. But let us not forget the most important thing of all, our morals and our sense of transparency. When we annex new areas into our cities, we must do so in a way that is fair and just, ensuring that everyone has access to the resources they need to thrive. We cannot allow the power of annexation to be used as a tool for oppression and discrimination. So, what can we do to ensure that annexation is carried out in a way that is morally and ethically sound? For one thing, we can practice transparency, again, I state, ensuring that everyone has a say in the decision-making process and that all actions are taken in the light of day. We must also remember to focus on the needs of underserved communities, providing them with the resources they require to live healthy and meaningful lives. We cannot simply take from these communities without giving back. We must be willing to invest in them and make sure they are not left behind. In the spirit of the Honorable Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., let us pledge to work together for a brighter future, since we claim a one Mobile, one in which every person has the opportunity to thrive and flourish. Let us commit ourselves to the principles of morality and transparency, so that we can build a better world for generations to come. Thank you, my friends, for your attention and your commitment to this important issue. May we all work together to create a more just and equitable society, one step at a time. And for many of you on this panel that know me, you know I mostly go straight off my head. So, for me to sit here and write this address, you got to know how serious this is. Thank you for the time.
Reggie Hill.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn and Mr. Carroll.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody, all the speakers, and I know we got, um, rigid, Mr. Hills is about to come and speak as well, um, but I don't see, um, annexation as one of the topics, so I wanted to address it now. I want to thank everyone for coming. I, I believe that, and everything that, uh, Mr. Hollis stated, uh, is very true. I think we have to be fair. We know that our communities, one, two, and three, is one of the oldest parts of the city. We're, we're, and for us to see growth, we have to take care of what we have. And so, with annexing, annexing any part, we want to make sure that we're able to provide for the oldest parts of our city. And so, anytime I said I was gonna support anything, I want to make sure that we're able to take care of those parts. With that being said, we, as a community and as a city, have to understand that we have to work together to make sure that that happens. And what I have to, you know, since I've been on this council, and what I believe, this council have shown that. We, from starting, from the beginning, since we came here, we started with redistricting, we was able to get that done. Regardless of going forward, and I know there's some things that we have seen throughout our time and even before this term, but going forward, we have shown that we was able to accomplish this. I said it from the beginning, we will get redistricting done, and we did that. And I believe going forward, we will get this accomplished. And I believe that Mobile will be in a better place, regardless what happens, because I believe that this council truly, and this administration, truly cares about the best interests of our citizens. Now, what I believe is when we get these information, the studies back, then now we can go forward in our communities and share that information. And I truly, if you listen to it, I haven't made any statements really regarding it, because I'm waiting to hear back from the study. I can't give you a statement till I get the information. So, I truly want to have the facts before I, I make any type of statements, but I'm ready to get the information back, so we can go out in our communities and so we can hear from the residents. And just like my colleague, President Small, I'm, I'm gonna be out having those meetings as well. And so, I'm glad that all the speakers have come down here, sharing your concerns, because that's one of the things that I would like to hear in our community meetings. And hopefully, by you sharing those things now and after us receiving those studies, now we'll be able to address those things. So, again, I want to thank you all for coming down, sharing your concerns, speaking and giving that information early. So, now that when we get those studies, we can look at it and we can... So now that when we get those studies, we can look at it and we can address your concerns. So again, thank you to all the speakers, everyone that came down. And, and hopefully going forward, after we can get those studies, we can move our city forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Question for the administration, are we still on schedule for a Thursday, Friday completion and submission of the study from PFM?
Yes.
Has there been any pre-release of information that's available to the council?
Not that we're aware of, no.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
Mr. Woods, when you all get that information, will you be sharing it with the entire council or how do you intend to handle that?
That's, that's, that's what the, uh, intent is, is to.
So you just email it to us or?
So you have to work through, you have to work through verifying the information, and once that's done, you send it.
So sometime maybe by the end of the week?
As soon as we get it, our plan is to send it to the entire council.
Uh, question. Uh, would it not be prudent for the council president to set a committee meeting in case there are questions to the responses provided by PFM so that we have a clear understanding of what we're looking at? If there's, if there are additional details that we may not understand as far as numbers?
Uh, that, that's completely up to you all.
Yeah, I believe that we should, but I guess it also depends on exactly when is this, is number, the numbers gonna actually be out back this week? Then we go ahead and set a meeting from there.
Uh, re- request of, uh, council from District Two now, knowing that we'll have that information on Friday, uh, could we not request a committee meeting immediately for next Tuesday, if not sooner? If council members are available?
Uh, I would just say that, uh... You want me? We're, we're setting this probably, uh, probably very close. We need to make the demonstration, this president, and then the people from, um, the, uh, reports also can be heard through that report.
I agree.
We will, we'll work on that.
Uh, and reason, reason for, uh, the expediency is, is because, uh, there'll be a short fuse once we get this information and start trying to get it out to our district. And going through that cycle of community meetings and making sure that we cover, uh, all the area that we need to cover with all the people that we need to cover before there's a vote on the information. So as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll work with the administration, try to get their schedule soon as possible. Anything else from the council? Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. Uh, I rise today to address ARP, the Civic Center, and Public Safety. Uh, last week, I emphasized the importance of conversation, and I guess it was, uh, so baffling that I was left unread. So I'm hoping that today we can extend that. I grew up in District Two, I attended District Two schools, and when I was at that age, you could just say something and you would get a response. However, I will make it quite easy for you today by adding the commentary and then asking the necessary questions. And hopefully we can have the dialogue that I believe is necessary to improve the quality of life for our citizens. Uh, let's look at the ARP, please. Um, have we had any evaluation from the previous use of our funds? As we get, uh, prepared to allocate this next twenty-six, twenty-nine million, um, I think we should have a understanding of what we did with it before and how it has helped so that we can avoid those issues that are not advantageous to the city. Um, are there any plans for the current use on the table at all? Has anything been discussed, whether that has been in a committee meeting, um, at separate meetings with departments, uh, any of the leaders of the city, uh, even thrown ideas about for the new usage? Um, are we going to set a clear timeline as to how we're going to issue these resources? We know that the last time this came about, and some of you were not here, so this might not be clear, uh, we were supposed to get something done during the summer months. And then after only one organization turned in information, we delayed it to the end of that year. So it was then supposed to be released on December fourteenth. This then moved to being released in February of the following year. So I'm just wondering if we could have a, a, a concrete and clear timeline, uh, going forward with the new uses. And then as well, have we considered using some of this ARP money to increase the performance contract? We know exactly what's going on and where the needs are in the city, and certain groups are just not allowed to be at the table. We can use these resources right now to enhance the quality of life in that manner. Let's move to the Civic Center, please. Um, what happened to the plan that focused directly on the arena and the theater? It seemed like that just kind of disappeared and then we start adding things onto it. Have we made any considerations on what to say? Say our potential tenant, uh, decides to vacate the property in the future years? What are we going to do then with the existing structure? I think we have other examples in the city near the water, um, to compare this to. Uh, what is the profit-to-loss comparison, um, between the Civic Center and the Convention Center? And do we have any department that is working directly on bringing entertainment, uh, to the downtown area? Or is there a division of that department that we could focus back on what the Civic Center did? Again, I mentioned last week, top ten billboard artists coming here annually. Um, and then I don't really have the time because of that buzzer to get into the public safety piece. But we spent millions of dollars on cameras, um, to, I guess, eradicate or, or better look at, um, preventing crime in the area. Nonetheless, we have city facilities, city facilities, that are not operating the cameras in front of their facilities. We'll continue it next week. Thanks, Fiona.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance is held over. Zero-one, zero-one-two, ordinance to amend Chapter forty-four, Article for Historic Preservation.
Motion to lay over thirty days.
Oh.
And promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Um, Mr. President, just, uh, quick follow-up to this motion. Uh, there was a committee meeting this morning, uh, chaired by the Rules Committee. Uh, out of that committee meeting, we have determined that we will, uh, reach out and set a committee of community members, the MHDC, and, uh, some historic preservation lawyers and try to find some type of compromise between the State, uh, Enabling Act and our current local legislation to see if we can find some room. Uh, hopefully we can get this done in, over the next thirty days. If not, then, uh, we will have to reach out just for a little bit more time. But I ask those in the historic preservation community, uh, with the MHDC and everyone else to, uh, be patient as we work through this process.
Madam Clerk.
Sixty-four, zero thirteen, rezoned property located at eleven oh one and eleven oh seven O'Sheil Road from R-one and B-two to B-two.
So move.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over. Forty, zero eighty, declare the structure at thirty-two oh one Lee's Lane a public nuisance and order it demolished.
So move.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Ronald.
Very briefly, we did have someone show up last, uh, sixty days ago to discuss this, uh, particular item. And, and they weren't the property owner, they were, they were, uh, a tax lien holder. And, um, it's my understanding that they have not been able to, um, secure this structure or improvement in any, improve it in any way. But the community is, you know, left with this building, you know, just right across from the, the new soccer complex of which the city has invested five million dollars in, and it's a nuisance to the community. So, um, I'm gonna follow the lead of the administration here and declare it, uh, as a public nuisance. And, uh, the administration, by my understanding, will continue to work with the property owners.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Zero-one, two seventy-eight, authorize agreement with the Villages Spring Hill to facilitate landscaping, irrigation, and public right-of-way. To zero-eight, two seventy-nine, approve item-based bid for unmarked vehicle light and siren upbits for Mobile Fire Rescue. Zero-eight, two eighty, approve item-based bid for replacement rooms and brushes for street sweepers. Zero-eight, two eighty-one, approve purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products Decorative Street Signposts. Zero-eight, two eighty-two, approve purchase order, and two eighty-three, are approving purchase orders to TranTex Transportation Products of Texas for traffic control, speed efficiency, for traffic engineering, and for traffic control barricades for traffic engineering. Zero-eight, two eighty-four, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for suburban, for the Mobile Police Department. Zero-eight, two eighty-five, approve purchase order to CNH Construction Services for mini-message board with trailer, the cruise terminal. Zero-eight, two eighty-six, approve purchase order to SHI International for annual subscription to Terranova Security Awareness Training and Library Services. Twenty-one, two eighty-seven, approve authorized contract with Arena Fire Protection for fire sprinkler and backflow preventer inspections and repairs at various city facilities. Twenty-one, two eighty-eight, authorized contract with Census Corporation for Uniform and Equipment Rental Services. Twenty-one, two eighty-nine, authorized contract with Virginia Wrecking Company for phase-two asbestos abatement and demolition of Woodlawn Apartments. Twenty-one, two ninety-two, authorized contract of Amerson Roofing for re-roofing of various city facilities. Twenty-one, two ninety-four, authorized performance contract with Society Mobile La Havana, uh, Inc. Thirty-one, two ninety-five, authorized contract application to the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for fiscal year twenty-two Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. And sixty, two ninety-six, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims.
So move.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
Twenty-one, two ninety-one, authorized contract with the University of South Alabama, USA Health Division to provide pharmaceutical services and medications for our Mobile Fire Rescue Department.
So move.
Second.
And promptly. Promptly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Ronald.
I'd like to offer a minor, just, uh, somewhat clerical amendment to this to make clear that the contract for this service is for one-year renewable annually for up to three years without the council's further approval for the renewals. Uh, a copy of this amendment has been, um, provided to the clerk's office.
Second, in the discussion on amendment. All in favor on amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? Going back to original motion, another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Twenty-one, two ninety-three, authorized performance contract with Friends of Mobile Historic Development.
Motion to lay over thirty days.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I was laid over for thirty days.
Ordinance is being introduced. Eighty-eight, zero fourteen.
By council rules, this ordinance, uh, will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced. Zero-three, two ninety-eight, through zero-three, three-three-nine.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read with the exception of thirty-one dash three hundred and zero-three dash three-three-nine.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Yes, sir.
This, Mr. Ronald.
Uh, I wanted to just draw some attention to the, um, nuisance abatement department that they are, have focused their attention down in Theodore on two structures that have been, uh, just a total nuisance to the community for some time. And I want to say thank you. I appreciate y'all getting down there, checking these things out. The community, I'm certain, will be totally happy that this is happening.
Another discussion on waiving the rule.
Oh, this.
Thank, thank you for sharing.
Well, I was just so excited to let them know how much I appreciate them.
All in favor of waiving the rule? All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Zero-three, two ninety-eight, appoint Lucy Castrantis to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. Zero-nine, two nine-nine, transfer funds from District Seven discretionary account to Parks and Recreation Revenue Account to assist with facility fees. Uh, thirty-one, three zero-one, authorized pre-proposal application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's National Coastal Resilience to fund shoreline stabilization and restoration at Brookley by the Bay Park. Thirty-seven, three oh-two and three oh-three, are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license to bottles up, uh, Mobile, Mardi Gras Park, and also a special events retail license to Iron Hand Brewing on, brewing on State Street. Forty, three oh-four, three oh-five, three oh-six, three oh-seven, three oh-eight, and three oh-nine, are declaring the structures on, on Glass Avenue, Esler Lane, North Carolina Street, Smith Alley, Smith Street, North Cody Road, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight, three ten and three eleven, are authorized removal of weeds and assessing cost of removal of weeds. Weed lean group sixteen forty and sixteen thirty-seven. Sixty, three twelve and three thirteen, are proving award a special bonus to the officer of the month and to the firefighter of the month. Sixty, three fourteen, three fifteen, three sixteen. I'm sorry.
Uh.
Uh, three fourteen, three sixteen, three seventeen, three eighteen, three nineteen, three twenty, three twenty-one, and three twenty-two are determining appropriations to Booker T. Washington Middle School, the Fuse Project, Holiday Transitional Center, Providence Foundation Festival of Flowers, Marchville Property Owners, Inc., Sugar Creek Homeowners Association, Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation, St. Paul's Episcopal School, Serve a Public Purpose, and approving payments.
Madam Clerk, if we can just, if you can, uh, take back forty dash three oh-four and forty dash three oh-five, we're gonna lay those over thirty days.
Sixty days?
I mean sixty, I'm sorry.
Sixty.
Sixty days.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I, I did take those. I'm sorry. Shouldn't have taken those together. Okay. Motion.
So move.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Uh, uh, Mr. President, you, did you include sixty-three fifteen?
No.
No.
Okay. Sixty-three fifteen, determine the appropriation to the downtown Mobile District Management.
Motion to second. And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't stand. I believe we have to call forty-three oh four, forty-three oh five, and zero-three dash three-three-nine.
Forty-three oh four, are both of these going for sixty days?
Yes.
Forty-three oh four, forty-three oh five, determine the structures at twenty-six, sixty-three Glass Avenue and twelve fifty-four Esler Lane, of nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Motion to lay over sixty days. Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I was laid over for sixty days.
CIP resolutions.
I think we got one more, thirty-one dash three hundred.
And three thirty-nine.
And three thirty-nine.
Move to, uh, lay over one week.
No, those were, you refused your name, consent on those.
Consent, so.
Yeah, so they, they automatically.
Yep.
CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one, three twenty-three.
By council rules, these will lay over one week.
Um, President?
Yeah, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, this morning during pre-council, uh, I know we're holding this item over for a week. Uh, I was reminded that, uh, I so graciously appro- uh, agreed to a hundred forty-three thousand dollars in appropriations to the design of the, uh, to, to the fire station, but not to the construction. Um, I didn't remember that. Um, I think two or three of the people that were in the meeting kind of graciously reminded that I said no, one hundred percent the money, I mean, to the, to the station itself, the funding for the design costs. So, uh, guys, uh, I guess I was wrong in that point. Uh, I will release the one forty-three for the design, uh, but, uh, the three million dollars will have to discussed another way for that.
Lay those over one week.
Uh, uh, but, but I, I, I felt I needed to say that after I told them. Uh, 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 but I, I, I felt I needed to say that after I told them that I thought that that just was not something that we were gonna do, but we did agree to it earlier.
Madam Clerk?
Resolutions being introduced. Zero-one, three twenty-four through sixty-three, thirty-six.
By council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one, three-three-seven. Call for public hearing to rezone property located at forty-seven oh-one Halls Mill Road from R-one to I-one, scheduled April twenty-fifth. Forty-one, three thirty-eight. Call for public hearing proposing an amendment to tax increment financing District One in the City of Mobile authorizing the preparation of an amendment to the tax increment financing District One Plan, authorizing the President of the City Council to perform certain actions required by Alabama law and directing the publication of this resolution.
Second.
And proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Six, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give a, uh, special recognition to the Drug Education Council and the Virginia guy. Uh, they had their annual luncheon yesterday, and I will tell you that it, it was a tremendous occasion, an event. Um, the Drug Education Youth Council, or City Youth Council was there, and the place was absolutely packed. Our mayor was awarded a, a leadership award from, from the council. Um, and, you know, they do some great work in the community, i- in our schools, in a very problematic area. And we've all seen the fentanyl increase in, in the city, the other drug use in the city. And they're combating that on a daily basis. So kudos to them in, in getting that message out. It was a great event. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Jones. Uh, District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Um, no, Mr. President. Just, uh, please continue to watch, uh, uh, my website, my Facebook page, uh, the text notifications for the upcoming meetings after the twenty-fourth, uh, so that we can make sure that we can get all information out to everyone that's interested in the, uh, PFM study or validation of the information provided to everyone that is interested and everyone that wants to be a part of this, uh, transition. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Very briefly, I want to draw everyone's attention to the events going on this week at the Festival of Flowers, uh, presented by Ascension Providence Foundation. Uh, on Thursday, March twenty-third, at five-thirty PM, uh, there is the Tenth Annual Buds and Brews. Uh, on Friday, March twenty-fourth, from five to eight PM, there's flowers after hours. There's music and food trucks. On Saturday, March twenty-fifth, from nine to eleven AM, there is an exotic car show. And then Saturday, March twenty-fifth, from two to four PM, there's a band party, music by Johnny Hayes and the Love Seats. And then Sunday, March twenty-sixth, is Family Fun Day. I hope everybody comes out and enjoys it. Hopefully, we'll have good weather, um, and I'll see you there.
And, uh, Mr. President, just a caveat there. They've moved that back to Ascension Providence this year, so it will be at Providence Hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Reynolds. District, uh, One, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, greetings to District One. We got a lot of great things taking place. On April the eighth, we will have a spring fling at Trenton Garden Park. Invite everybody out to the City of Mobile, from, in the City of Mobile to District One in the Trenton Garden Community. It's gonna be from ten AM to four PM. We're gonna have a petting zoo, Easter bunny photos. There's gonna be music, Easter egg hunt. So everybody come out, family-friendly event. We're gonna have a great time. So from ten AM to four PM, come out to the Trenton Garden Park at the Dodge Community Center, um, on April the eighth. And then on April the fourteenth, we have Take Care of Tomerville. It's gonna be one of the biggest cleanup days you ever seen in the City of Mobile, I believe. And so we're asking residents, um, to be out, but you will see city workers out there. Um, you're gonna see tow trucks getting junk cars out of yards and business. It's just gonna be, uh, we're, we're gonna take care of Tomerville community. So Take Care of Tomerville is gonna be a great day. Um, and hopefully, we're gonna move forward, taking care, and not hopefully, but we will be moving forward, taking care, um, of the community in District One. And then April the twenty-fifth, we'll have our community meeting in Midtown at Ashland Place Church. Um, so more information will be coming forward. And so District One, we got a lot of great things coming up. Um, and please report. If you have any issues, you see anything, please call three-one-one. Report any issues. Make sure you keep that SRO number, um, so that's a way that we can make sure, make sure that we can keep up with that information. So thank you, Mr. President, and, um, have a great day.
Also, I would like to, um, say on behalf of myself and Attorney Ricardo Woods, uh, welcome to the Divine Nine, uh, Councilman Penn. Councilman Penn, across, you know, the best noble clan that is, that's Capella Passai. And, uh, he know that, um, every field of human endeavor is, is achievement. So congratulations, um, Councilman, uh, Penn, and, uh, understand why you, you know, didn't choose the same one that I would sit attorney, you know, because, uh, you knew better. But, uh, but yeah, congratulations to, uh, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could chime in on that, congratulations to, uh, Councilman Penn and welcome him into a noble bond of, of, uh, great men of distinction in the city. Uh, welcome to the group. Welcome to the Divine Nine.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. And, uh, just to add on to the Festival of Flowers, um, thank you, uh, Councilman Reynolds for going through all of the different events. And I will be there on Sunday for sure because I get to give out the awards for the children's arts program. So I will be joining them then. Um, just to note also, um, there's some work going on on McGregor Avenue, as most people know, especially if you use that as your normal north-south, um, corridor. Uh, while the cut-through traffic is much, much better and many thanks go out to our project director, our engineers, and of course, our Mobile Police Department, uh, for stopping the, the cut-through traffic. But now what we're finding is in the construction zone itself, and we all know that's a very dangerous place to be, um, some of the youngsters in the area are riding bikes through the area. And, uh, the project manager said last week, one youngster was almost hit by a big piece of machinery. So we just want to remind everybody that construction zones are no place for people riding bicycles. And also, some are apparently riding in the concrete as it's trying to, um, harden. So we just want to remind everyone to stay out of the construction zones and, um, certainly don't be trying to write your name or initials or whatever in the cement. And we'll be sending out notices on our Facebook and with the schools in the nearby area as well.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory. And to the citizens of District Three, greetings. Uh, please mark your calendar for several events that's coming up on April the sixth at six o'clock, uh, PM. Uh, we will be having a, uh, Maysville slash Odell Community Meeting at the Revelation Baptist Church at six o'clock PM, inviting all the citizens to come out and, you know, put in your input as far as in, uh, being involved in the community and what you want out of the community, what you want the city to help you within the community. Again, this would take place on April the sixth at six o'clock PM at the Revelation Baptist Church. On April the eighth is our annual, uh, Easter egg hunt, which would be held at the Gilead Elementary School, uh, located on Duffett on the Parkway. Again, that would be at three o'clock PM, not just inviting the kids of District Three, but throughout the city. Uh, we will have plenty of food, fun, and games, and also the Easter bunny will be present. And again, that will be on Saturday, April the eighth at three o'clock PM at the Gilead Elementary School, uh, sponsored by District Three. And also on April the twentieth, uh, six o'clock PM, we will have a, uh, meeting talking about, um, the future of DIP. Uh, this would be held at the Riverside Baptist Church. Most will be focusing on detail and what is that, what that include with the businesses and also the residents along the stop in or DIP. Again, that would be held on April the twentieth at six o'clock PM at the Riverside Baptist Church. And, uh, one other thing, uh, Council, I mean, excuse me, Attorney, uh, Woods, uh, between the council members, uh, Penn and Carroll, myself, and then also the, uh, Executive Director of the Public Safety, you know, Capella Men, you know, we, we are way, you know, the Alpha Boys, you know. Just, just want to let you know that. Anything else from this council? Anything?
Anything from the administration?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Woods.
Make sure, I, I say, um, as all Alpha Men say to all Capella Men, you're welcome. And, uh, Mr. Penn, welcome to the Divine Nine.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
And proper moving second in the discussion.